For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting on February 3rd, 2020. Call the order, please.
Hess.
Johnson.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Noack.
Here.
And Walagora.
Hi.
Here.
Is I some pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, modifications to the agenda this evening. I've requested a motion to remove the closed session from the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
And so it would also be the item after that, too?
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry, who's that second? Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
And Walagora?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Any other modifications tonight? Approval of the minutes for regular and closed sessions of January 21st, 2020. Any issues, changes? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. This is the only time during tonight's meeting with the exception of medical marijuana facilities. That topic you can wait until we open a workshop for that. Otherwise, please come to the podium if you'd like.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cynthia Mischinsky and do I need to state my address?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm at 921st Avenue in the City of Alpena. And first of all, welcome to this phone and to the community and to the team here.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight on behalf of the parents and also teachers of All Saints Catholic School families, also on behalf of Principal Ms. Hatch, who unfortunately felt ill and could not be here this evening. But I do want to take you, thank you very much for your time and consideration on the issue of the intersection on 2nd Avenue and Miller Street, as well as thanks to Rich Salander and Steve Schultz, who have been in communication with us and let us know the process on how to address this issue. Through a petition signed by the parents of students, letters sent by the principals, and conversations with city officials, we've been asking that the traffic light by the school go back to being a functioning stoplight. Safety, of course, is a top priority for the students and their families there at the school, but a very close second is also the safety of the parishioners who are parking in the parking lot across the street and making their way over to church services most Wednesday mornings. They have a regular mass there, as well as some services, a quarterly mass services later in the evenings on Sundays. We know that having a functioning traffic light will reduce the number of severe accidents, but we also hope that will force drivers to become more aware of their surroundings while traveling through the intersection and in turn hopefully allow drivers to be more mindful of their proximity to the school and the likelihood of children and other pedestrians in the area as well. An unfortunate reminder of really how real this concern is was a traffic accident that did happen right at the intersection just about a week and a half ago, right during the school hours there. Personally, though, as a driver that uses that particular intersection several mornings out of the week, I can attest to the fact that it's often legitimate confusion amongst drivers there as to when is their turn to proceed, other drivers waving you through and having to look for oncoming traffic, as well as the obvious lack of turn signals everywhere, but especially there it can get a little hairy. And unfortunately, carrying this hustle and confusion is too easy to also be watching pedestrians or children. And I can understand any type of hesitation to change what traffic flow has already been going on there for quite some time. I believe that I can say with confidence that as the All Saints parents go through that intersection, they will be extra vigilant as the public adapts if you're able to make this change and ultimately create a safer intersection for the school and ultimately for the community as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Hello. My name is Seth Peters. I live at 1119 South Fourth Avenue in Alpena. I am both a parent and a teacher at All Saints Catholic School. And I have, I witnessed personally an accident last year right in front of what was the CIA Restaurant. And I was passing through and had to avoid the intersection that just happened very recently. And my concern is that we do have our preschoolers, I sometimes join the preschoolers on their walk around the block, and so they're outside very close to all of that traffic on a daily basis. I'm also concerned that it seems, my wife and I have noticed, anecdotally speaking, of course, but what we have noticed is that the high volume seems to coincide with when Lincoln is getting in and out of school. So at the very least, could the council, if we can't return it to its spotlight status as a regular spotlight, at the very least, could it be brought into spotlight status during the entry and exit times of the school day at Lincoln Elementary? Because that seems to be when, no matter whether you go to the intersection at Oldfield or Miller, you're left waiting for a very indefinite opportunity to be able to safely make your egress. So those are my concerns. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Anyone else? Okay. The consent agenda this evening is bills to be allowed in the amount of $182,888.59.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
And Hess?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We'll skip down to 11. Report of Officers, the Financial Director's Report of the Quarter Ending December 31st, 2019.
Okey-dokey. Okay. As the mayor stated, this is the quarterly report ending December 31st, which means we should be at 50% of our budget, so we're halfway through. When the budget was originally passed, we anticipated a deficit of $280,542. As of the end of December, that has increased to $374,706. The reasoning for that is, if you recall, we did the budget amendment for the loss of tax revenue for the Board of Review and the tax tribunal, it was about $42,700. So that decreased our revenue. The expenditures increased, and $45,000 of that was for the bathroom renovations at Bayview Park that had not taken place in the previous fiscal year, so we had to move it to the present, or the current fiscal year. So if we go up to the revenue section, you'll see that budget received so far is at 61%, 61.61%, so that's really good. Line by line, if you look at general, it's at 82.8% of budget received, and that is due primarily to the summer tax collection. Also, we had received more than budgeted for the personal property tax reimbursement from the state. We had budgeted $400,000 and we received $420,000, so that has yet to be added into the budget. So I guess really that would bring down the deficit to $354,000 if we want to do it that way. City Hall, the budget is at 39%, and that is due to rental rehab grants that we had budgeted, I think, $250,000 for, and we haven't received anything for that. IT revenue is at 94%, and that's because the annual journal entry for fiber internal rent was entered in December. Cemetery is at 39% of revenue, and the largest thing that I found in there was that we had $25,900 budgeted for miscellaneous charges, but as of December 31st, we only received 1.84% of that, so a couple hundred bucks. Police revenue is at 33%, and there we had budgeted $31,000 for federal grants, but we haven't received any of those monies yet. Fire EMS is at 27%, and as I had stated last quarter, that's due to the reversing journal entry of $376,000. But also, we budgeted $200,000 for an ambulance that the county was going to pay for, and we haven't received that yet. Public Works is good, at 51%. Lights is at zero. Their only source of revenue is reimbursements, and we haven't received any. And then Parks and Rec is at 60% of budget, and that is due to receiving the $5,000 donation from Performance Locker. I know it was presented at a January meeting, but we had actually received it in December. Down to the expenditures section, City Hall and IT look pretty good, just slightly over 50%. Building Authority, as stated previously, in the previous quarter, that's due to the annual principal payment. Cemetery is only at 34% because equipment rent and repair is below budget. Capital Outlay, we've only spent 17%, and the insurance payment hasn't been allocated yet. Police is at 49%. I know that's slightly under, but in looking more into the detail, salaries are below budget due to unfilled positions. No capital building maintenance, no building maintenance expenses yet. Fire and EMS is slightly over at 53%. Public Works is at 54%. Within that, the wages are high at 64%, supplies are high at 94%, and equipment rent is high at 79%. And what I think that is due to is the hanging of Christmas lights, because it used to be charged to lights when we were doing it through the journal entry method, but now that it's done through work order, it's being charged directly to Public Works. We also haven't spent any capital outlay money yet. Lights is at 31%, and so then in this one, where the Christmas lights were being charged, the wages are low at 7%. So when we went through this whole budgeting process last year, we weren't quite sure where, how the whole work order program was going to work. So we'll have a better handle on that this year. Parks and Rec is at 45%. Salaries are low at 37%, and the insurance payment has not been allocated, and we've only spent 31% of capital outlay. And other financing uses, which is transfers, are right on at 50%. So overall, we are at 51%. So that is good. On page two, the cash balances and investments. The Tree Park Improvement Fund is at $20,000, and I think I'd say this last quarter that it's due to using up that fund, so more of that will come out at the end of the fiscal year. The Stores' cash is negative, and it normally has a negative balance at this time if you look at the other two years, but it will be positive by fiscal year end. Building Inspection Fund was negative 60-some thousand in last quarter, but that was because of an appropriation to the General Fund that was made an error, and we are not going to do that for next fiscal year until the end. So we may have to transfer some of that back if it's not positive by fiscal year end. The DPW Construction Fund is increased at $338,000, and that is because of loan repayments from Fire EMS. The Retiree Healthcare is at $1.5 million, which has increased due to the large annual payment that was made in July. And then the other thing I wanted to point out is the Pension Fund, which has increased $250,000. This is book value. And if you recall, it was December of '18 when we made that transfer to PNC Bank. And if you look back at 12/31/18, the cash is at $4.4 million, because that wasn't invested yet, and it was kind of sitting in cash. But it looks like it was transferred to the equities. And that is all I have. Anybody have any questions?
I do not.
No, sir.
No questions. Anna, thank you for a great report. Receive and file.
I move we receive and file. Close of the budget.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Hess?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is new business. First up is the traffic signal at North 2nd Avenue and Miller Street. Rich?
As Cynthia indicated, staff has received many calls and letters regarding reactivation of traffic signal at the intersection of North 2nd and Miller Street. It is presently in flash mode with North 2nd Avenue under yellow flash and Miller Street under red flash. It has been in this operational for several years. That was initiated back a number of years ago when the controller actually failed. We had no other option than to put it into the flash mode, but that controller was replaced. So we did have the opportunity, we do have the opportunity to put it back into our cycling mode. The requests received for reactivation of the traffic signal are all related, are related to All Saints School. Children attending the school, the parents accessing the school to drop off and pick up their children. Much of the concern revolves around trying to exit from Miller Street onto or across 2nd Avenue. The letters and emails also raise concern over the number of accidents which have occurred at this intersection. I have reviewed the most recent traffic accident history, which we have available through Roadsong, our database tool. This covers the period for years 2015 through 2018. During that timeframe, there were 12 accidents in close proximity to this intersection. The intersection also ranks fourth as our most frequent accident location for intersections under our control. By that, I mean there are certain intersections that we do not control. 1032 U.S. 23 are ones that we don't have control over. So just looking at our own intersections, this is the fourth, has the fourth highest It should be noted that if the intersection traffic signal control is reactivated, which I believe it should be based on the accident history, the school proximity, and the increase in students attending it, that the number of accidents will likely increase. It's a proven fact. When you install a traffic signal, typically you will see an increase in the number of accidents. Typically, rear end fender benders, but they're not the debilitating type accidents that are more common, and that's what the intersections are really set up to correct. However, the severity of the increased traffic accidents will likely lower down. With a signalized intersection, you typically have more accidents where under fender benders, but do not have the severe debilitating type accidents. If reactivated, this light would function from 6:45 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., which will cover the school's hours of operation plus 30, 40 minutes before and after. The request to reactivate the traffic signal would be forwarded to Thunder Bay Electric to perform the work and coincide with news release or releases stating the signal will be put back into active mode. It's not something where you just go off, flip the switch, and it'd be active. We need to do some public education, get some advance warnings signed up. If you've all seen it, we can put a new signal in, have the signs up, new traffic signal ahead. We would do that, same thing. We've typically done that. We've changed the intersection control on Carter and Third. We put up advance warning signs, flashers, et cetera, to advise them of that. I didn't include the crash severity report. If you look at it, there were, out of the 12 accidents, two of them were classified as having debilitating injuries. Three of them were classified as potential debilitating injuries, et cetera. And then there were seven with just property damage-only accidents. So that is the information.
I've got some questions for you, Rich. So I guess I'll start out by saying that certainly the protecting and the safety of the students is paramount, walking across the street, the ones that walk home and things. I do have a couple of questions about vehicles, okay? The report says 12 accidents in close proximity to this intersection. What does that mean? What's close proximity?
Basically, you set it up a parameter where it goes out 100 feet in relation to the accident, because a lot of times, you know, a vehicle may be in an accident, but they may go 100 feet down the road or something, and then pull over to the side. They may not be stranded right there. So you typically look at some radius around the intersection.
Okay. Because I just want to, I want to make sure that what we're doing is going to affect that intersection. When Seth was up here, and I don't know if he left, but he mentioned an accident in front of CIA Restaurant. CIA Restaurant is like a block or two away, yes? That's not that.
It's in that same block. It's about through, it's at the other end of the block.
It's at the next block. So I don't know if that traffic signal would really make any difference in whatever that accident was. Now, there was, this is the second time that I've heard of an accident just recently that Cynthia mentioned. Do you know anything about that one? Was that signal-related?
No, no, I don't. That may, you know, Chief Jop may have some information on that. Listen, I strictly looked at the database we have, and usually we're about a year behind in getting the crash data imported from the state police into that database.
Because as far as the signal itself goes with vehicular traffic, I'm not really sure if I even understand why there's an issue, whether it's the people don't know what to do with a flashing caution light on 2nd, because people coming up on Miller, it's flashing red. There's no, there's no question what you're supposed to do. You're supposed to stop. But do they not know that people are not stopping, going the other way? I don't understand the confusion, I guess, for vehicular traffic.
Personally, through, I drive through there three or four times every day, you know, and I've pulled up to the intersection where there was somebody coming from the church side of 2nd Avenue. They'll pull up to the intersection, and I'll pull up to the intersection. Well, I, you go back to what you learned in drivers that many, 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 many years ago, that, you know, the person on the right has the right of way. So, you know, I'm making a right term. Typically, I will have the right of way, but I've seen people that you pull up there with your blinker on, and they start to go, you know? So I think that there is some confusion over what to do when you have multiple people sitting there across from each other on that flashing red.
Okay.
One of the biggest factors, I think, that we've seen, you know, a couple things. Visibility coming out at that corner is pretty marginal. You know, you pull up to that flashing red on the church side of Miller, your church side of 2nd Avenue and Miller Street, Carriage Park on the left-hand side on 2nd Avenue, you really have to creep out there a long way, and a lot of times you don't, you have a difficult time seeing people coming. The other thing, and goes back to our, you know, potentially another issue that we could solve, one of our other high accident intersections is at Fletcher and, excuse me, I was thinking of Fletcher, it's Miller and Wallman, I was thinking of it. You know, a lot of people try to come out next to the post office, you know? If they have a signalized intersection, they may go down those two or three blocks to come out at the signalized intersection, taking some of the burden off from that and the hazards associated with coming out at that intersection. Looking at a number of different options and scenarios there, is there a, is there one good fix for everything? No, I don't think so. But this, I think, is a step in the right direction to provide a safe haven for people to get out on the 2nd.
I'm sort of done. Go ahead.
Okay. I agree with what the mayor says, that safety is utmost important, but we have the crash reports. Is there a time of day that these are happening? Are these late night? Are these a mixture? When are these accidents happening?
And I didn't delve into that. I can, because they are reported by time of day. I mean, I can drill down into this accident history and get as much information as we want. So I, no, did I look at the time of day that they're happening? No.
I'm just curious if there's not other factors in that. But I also think that if we were to consider this change, I don't think we can do certain hours in the day and then switch it back to flashing. It either has to be one way or the other, or you're going to have more accidents there than you've ever had.
But I guess, that light before, we used to switch it at 4 o'clock, back when it was operational. It used to run from early morning, and I don't know what time it turned on, but I know it was set to switch at 4 o'clock. Most of our other lights will switch 7 p.m., some go to 11 p.m. So Ripley Street's a good example, but I think most of those switch at 11 p.m.
And the late night switch, I don't mind, but I don't think switching it at 3:30 in the afternoon or 4 o'clock in the afternoon, that's going to confuse people even more.
I just strictly looking at it from an efficiency standpoint, you don't have a lot of that cross-traffic after the school lets out, and to keep traffic flowing in the 5 p.m. timeframe was what I was looking. That's why when I looked at the school hours and looked at changing it, that's why I picked 3:30 now. You know, we can go to any time, and we can run it through, you know, any time we set. Like I said, I looked at it, just once the cross-traffic issues are out of there, then we have that opportunity to make it flow fairly smoothly, because most of the traffic, I go through there shortly after 5 o'clock, and, you know, I would dare say that 60% of the traffic's going the left onto Miller, you know, the 40s going straight through.
Yeah. And well, and here's the issue, that when it went, when it went to flashing the first time, it was, in my opinion, it was huge relief to everybody except for All Saints individuals, because you come down there and you're on 2nd Avenue and you're heading to wherever you're heading, and you're going to stop at a red light for absolutely no reason. You just stop and you wait, because there's nobody at any of the other, at any of the other intersections, you're just waiting, and then when it turns green, you can go again. It just, for the practicality of the road itself, it just, it was borderline ridiculous to even have a light there, because there was so little amount of traffic on 2nd Avenue.
Can you change the amount of time that you're stopped?
No, it's a stop, I mean, a stop is a stop. You don't want to stop for, I mean, 30 seconds, I suppose, because you're just stopped for nothing. And I get it, I understand where the parishioners and the school parents are coming from, but there's stop signs across from intersections all over the community. There's one across from St. Bernard's, and St. Bernard's has, used to have a pretty significant amount of parishioners that parked across the street. I don't want to just make a, I don't want to just fix something just for this one location, just for these, just for one party. No offense to the people at the church, but I want to do the right thing, something that will work. And I don't know if stopping traffic for the entire day for a couple hours in the morning and a couple hours in the evening or in the afternoon are the right thing to do. I just, I don't know if they're the right thing to do. I was actually going to go the opposite of what Cindy said, and can you just make it, do it for an hour and a half in the morning and an hour and a half when Lincoln and All Saints let out, and then let it go the rest of the day? Is that going to be even worse? I don't know.
I think that would be worse.
I'd like to take the light right out and just put a stop sign up. I know everybody's going to probably boo me for that, but if the confusion is the fact that people don't know what to do when there's a flashing yellow and a flashing red light, then just take it out and put up a stop sign, and maybe we can put a crosswalk in for the students and have a crosswalk guard for the students that are walking. Everybody else that's driving a vehicle, in my opinion, this is just me, I'm not speaking for council, you went to driving, we all have a license, we know what to do at a stop sign, we know what to do, and you just, you do what's right. Somebody waves you, and it's against the law for Somebody waves you, and it's against the law for them to be waving you, then don't go. That's just me when I'm driving. I see people waving me every once, I don't, no, it's not my turn, and I'm not going. So I'll wait for you. But I just, I don't think turning the light on for those, for the entire day is going to rectify the problem, or if it does, it's going to be an issue for just about everybody else. So I'd like to find something that works before we turn it back on.
I was going to work it really good, we'll totally stop there. The whole point is to slow down traffic. So just slow down traffic, I mean, it's not going to take that much time on your day to stop for stop sign, and then proceed on. Is this clear? Just, and I, you know, putting stop signs in to reduce speed is a fallacy, because typically what you'll see, you know, it's the first thing people want to do is put a stop sign in to slow traffic down in a residential neighborhood. Human nature, you take off from the traffic light, you'll accelerate, if the speed limit's twenty-five, you'll accelerate up to thirty-five, and then coast back down, so, and there's a number of studies out there, and we've looked at these before, in the families reports, you will typically see speed, the overall speed on the street increase by a couple miles per hour, because people will do that, they'll accelerate up, and then coast back down to the, close to the posted speed.
I have a question, Matt, when you talk about traffic there, that you're stopping for no reason, are you saying at Miller, there's not traffic generally coming through? Is that what you're saying? I'm asking, because I'm.
Because I'm going down Second Avenue, and let's say that that light is functioning, and it turns red before I get there. I stop, and there's no one else on Miller or Second Avenue.
So you're saying you don't think it's a very busy intersection? I've recently been living near there temporarily, and that's a very busy intersection, and I personally use Miller, and I think a lot of people do in our community, as a cut-through around town. Miller is a thoroughfare to get to night, or to get to, especially for anyone living, you know, it's that type of living in the area, between houses, and I take Miller, even before I lived over there, I took Miller often for different reasons. I think it's a pretty busy road, so, so I just, I guess, my thought is, I necessarily agree that it's, there would be, there aren't reasons, there are not, a lot of people usually come from the right unless it happens to be during school, as far as that whole area, as much as the post office intersection, and that is so tight. I never, I try to never stop there. I go up one block down toward by the old CIA West to go out, because I feel a little bit safer, but then the next, in that you're still bringing traffic around at school, because the post office corner is so hard to see out, gets in traffic. With timing, you mentioned, I think we better change it, it should go to the, what we ever did, to the typical time, around town, I think most lights change at ten, is what I thought, because I'm around about, it seems to be when they're flashing, but it should be pretty consistent with other lights. But I think, thinking about evening, between the post office there, you know, there's other several restaurants, and the theater right there, so five, six, seven o'clock at night, all the time, all those people are there, so there's still a lot of people eating and snot during school, and what a light would do is it would, there would be a cease and flow of traffic, because Second is a busy street. You'd have a break for kids to get across, or for restaurant people to go across, or theater people, there would be a break in traffic, or if it's a busy time, there could be no break for a long time. So, for safety, for a lot of reasons, I think it might be a viable thing to do, but I don't think we should cut it off at three thirty in the afternoon, end of the day.
You know, and as we're sitting here, you know, there are a lot of options with traffic signals. Now, you know, one of the things, just as, so you don't have that issue where you come up there on Miller, I used to complain about it too, because I'd pull up there and there's nobody coming, I'd have to stop. The other option might be, and I don't know if it's feasible, we'd have to check with Thunder Bay Electric, just put detector loops on the side on the Miller Street, so it would only function if there was a vehicle that pulled up there. So they would actually pull up to the detector loops, which could then activate the signal. You know, I don't know what the cost is, but we could also look at pedestrian, you know, pedestrian activated, so that they could, if there was pedestrians in the intersection across, or they could push the button and have that similar to other intersections. That may be a compromise to avoid just cycling, stop, and I agree with you, there's a lot of times when, I think we've all pulled up to an intersection, there's nobody on the cross street, but you have to stop.
Let's look into that, let's look into that. Look into the cost of that and the options of that, if you will.
I guess, first and foremost, for me, I'm with the school, and I'm with your recommendation at the very least, I think we need to get that signal active, but I do like that option, that would be the ultimate for me, where if we are going to run later, and I kind of agree with Councilman Hess, that, you know, I'd rather see consistency with the signals. If it's seven o'clock, that's fine, but I think the detector loops and pedestrian crossing in that area would make sense for me, because I've heard from several who live on Miller Street that not only complain about the speed that vehicles are going through there, but want that signal reactivated too. So we have the church, but we also have all the citizens that live in there too, that would like to see that reactivated, so those are my thoughts.
I can investigate that information and see if it's feasible. I can't, I'm not going to guarantee it for the next meeting, it took me a long time to get an answer back from Thunder Bay Electric on that controller, so it may take me a while to get that information, and then we could look at what the costs are for putting in pedestrian activated signals at that corner.
And I'm curious, is there a crossing guard there that's active? Okay.
There's only one crossing guard now that's released, that's all white on Ripley.
Okay.
Well, pardon me, there's only one city function crossing guard, but other schools have, Lincoln School uses students.
And parents.
To do their students and parents, so I don't know if the All Saints has ever done that or not, but.
That might be a nice interim option.
Well, that's not the last.
Yeah, I know.
Again, there's still at a corner where there's, someone has a green light, it's still on, it's like a way to stop traffic, you know, and that was the case.
Yeah, they would just be there to guide them at appropriate.
Well, even though white though, they let them go when it's a red light, you know, just to make sure it won't get across safely, it's not right, good for like, people say, I'm going to step out, right, authority to stop, the chance, because all the kids can go, unless it's like a special field trip, nobody's sure.
So, because what, because there's a cost incurred in reactivating, I'm assuming, a couple of grams.
It'd be pretty minimal, as far as Thunder Bay Electric's time to go out, Thunder Bay Electric's time to go out and program it, which is pretty minimal. The detector loops, I don't even want to venture a guess right now, they're not outrageous.
Right. Well, they do those by camera, and there's several other things to do.
Most of the time, it's just sock cut into the pavement, put a loop of wires in there that will detect that a car sits over the top of them, interruption in the magnetic field will trigger it, so.
I'd like to look into that before we make a move, if that's all right with everyone.
Do you want a motion to table?
Do we need that? Because we don't know when he's bringing it back. Can you just bring it back as soon as possible?
I would say it would be, if not the next meeting, the following week, should everyone have the information.
Want to move the table?
We'll table it, yeah.
I move we table the light, or Second and Miller.
Second.
Mitchell?
Yes, Mr. Mitchell.
Okay, Noak?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thanks, thanks, Rich. And you're staying for the granular activated carbon changeout.
Calgon Carbon Corporation's been the low bid provider for carbon used on our filter beds and the water production plants since we started utilizing it in nineteen ninety-nine. The city has been utilizing reactivated carbon for the past six years, since two thousand fourteen, with a changeout in two thousand seventeen. This is an improved method for Eagle, and the city has seen the same lifespan, taste and odor reduction from reactivated carbon as from the virgin carbon. With the previous changeout, Calgon Carbon Corporation's been storing the carbon from four of our filter beds for reactivation and reuse during the proposed two thousand twenty changeout. Due to the way they do the changeout, they bring over the carbon, they'll vacuum the old carbon out, and then immediately put the new carbon back in. So at the end of the day, they have a couple of, you know, some truckloads of carbon. What they did, when we started using the reactivated, they take it back to the plant, it's in big bags, they store it in a warehouse, and then this time, if we improve them, they will reactivate that and bring that carbon over to start the process. And there's loss in shipping and that, so they always have to add some virgin carbon to it. Sue has contacted Calgon Carbon Corporation for pricing for the two thousand twenty carbon changeout process. They have provided the attached proposal with six semi-annual installments of thirty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars, for a total cost of a hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. And this fee covers the cost of delivery, installation of the reactivated carbon, the twenty percent virgin carbon, made up from normal losses associated with handling, transportation, and reactivation. They also perform annual tests on the granular carbon as requested by the city. We will pull a sample of the carbon, send it to them, they will run a series of tests on it to see what kind of life expectancy we're still seeing. This process has worked well in the past, and the city has been very satisfied with the products delivered and the workmanship of the Calgon employees during the removal and replacement process. It should be noted that the last changeout cycle from two thousand seventeen had a total cost of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, ninety-one cents, due to the need to replenish sand filter media lost in the carbon removal process. Every time they change it out, we use a liquid vacuum, and it sucks on the sand, so about every second time, second, third time, we have to replenish that sand at the filter beds. It is my recommendation to city engineer that city council approve the contract with Calgon Carbon Corporation for the two thousand twenty carbon changeout in the amount of one hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars, being six semi-annual installment payments of thirty-two, three sixty. Funding is budget annually at the water treatment, water fund treatment fund, surprise item for this.
The old question I had, and I had a comment earlier about it, on average, we're getting about three years out of a carbon field, and basically, when we discussed this last time, we actually bid out last time, and we had, it was a tremendous difference in the amounts, and with the reactivation, we're actually saving some money. Do you have an idea of how much it would be for the reactivation versus all virgin in here?
I'd have to go back to the first time we used the reactivation, but it was a significant savings by going to the reactivated as opposed to buying all virgin carbon, which is what we were doing for.
Any questions?
I move we approve the contract with Calgon Carbon Corporation for two thousand twenty for the carbon changeout in the amount of one hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and sixty, with six semi-annual installments of thirty-two, three sixty. Write that down.
Got it. Walagora?
Hi.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
And Noak?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Rich. Next up, chlorine pipe replacement project.
On January fourteenth, two thousand twenty, the city received no bids for the chlorine pipe replacement project at the water treatment plant. This project consists of all parts, permits, and labor necessary to design and install replacement piping related to the sodium hypochlorite that could bleach at the water treatment plant. Bid documents were sent to eleven vendors, as well as posted on the city's website, with two bids received as follows. Winkoff Plumbing and Heating, using the HDB, high-density polyethylene, option was a hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, and utilizing PVC piping was forty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. Johnson and Wood out of Saginaw, for the HDB option, a hundred and twenty-six thousand, PVC option, a hundred and six thousand. The city budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars for this project during the CIP process, and that was, I always hate when they come in like this, but that was based on some estimated numbers that Mike Collins out of the water plant had gotten for doing it a number of years ago, and I don't think they would have been too aligned with the PVC option, but once we started looking at the HDB piping in there, it got way out of whack. As specifications were developed, it was recommended to the water treatment plant personnel to utilize the HDB piping for delivery system in anticipation that it would decrease the potential for chlorine leaks the plant is currently experiencing. And everybody panics when they say chlorine leaks, it's basically industrial bleach that we see, that the fittings will eventually start to leak in there, so we have experienced that. But some of the suppliers have said that the HDB and the fused fittings that they use, don't typically see those leaks, that's why we looked at that as an alternative. In an effort to evaluate the best outcome for the system, pricing for both materials was requested. However, when prices were received, all of the options were significantly over budget. Even though it is more expensive, water treatment plant personnel feel that the HDB piping system is still the best ongoing option for the plant. Therefore, upon review of the bids and the recommendation of the water treatment plant personnel, it is my recommendation to city engineer that we reject the bids for the two thousand twenty chlorine pipe replacement at this time, and subsequently propose this project again in the next CIP and budget process, to increase the budget to reflect the anticipated cost bound during this bidding process. We've also talked, I shouldn't say we, Mike Collins has talked to another contractor out of the Calcasas area, has done HDB piping installation in a number of different water, wastewater plants, and thought that it was, you could probably come in pretty close to the PVC pipe price quarter here. We're going to do some more additional research with him to make sure, so we'll have a better number, we'll be, we'll be good this next time.
I move we reject the bid for a chlorine pipe replacement.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
And Walagora?
Hi.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll take a quick recess and then carry on with the workshop.